Great. Well, thanks for taking the time and putting this on the agenda. We really appreciate the opportunity to join you. Again, my name is Brent Salamara. I work for Associated Builders and Contractors. I'm the Director of Government Affairs. And I'll let everybody else introduce themselves.
I'm Austin Hawley. I'm the Government Affairs Coordinator at ABC.
I'm Harry Kane from Arthur Funk.
Ken Funk from Arthur Funk.
And if you're not familiar with ABC, we're a nonprofit construction trade association, a national association with 69 chapters across the United States, five of which have some touch to Pennsylvania. Austin and I work in, based out of Keystone Chapter in Mannheim. And our members are general contractors, subcontractors, bankers, architects, attorneys, anybody who can, touches the construction industry in general. And our mission, we provide many services to members, including education, training, apprenticeship, marketing, all kinds of services. Austin and I do our advocacy, and our charge in advocacy is to essentially level the playing field. You hear that term a lot around ABC, and promote the merit shop. Those two terms, level the playing field and merit shop are pretty core to ABC and our mission. And essentially what it means is, is we promote an environment where our members are free to compete equally, and on a level playing field with everybody else. So when it comes to construction, our philosophy is that everybody has the right to, to compete and put their best effort forward. And the other side of that, the merit shop, is that the winner of that project should be selected on merit alone, not based on the relationships, or who they know, or how long they've been around, or the size of their company, strictly the, the skill of their work. And that should be the basis for, for any award for construction. And we've been very successful at that, particularly in central Pennsylvania. And we have a strategic plan that guides us on a lot of the efforts that we work on. And last year, we started a kind of a new effort on a strategic plan. We've been working on project labor agreements, and I'll get more into that in a minute. But last year was the first year we really integrated a more localized approach on project labor agreement reform. So for years, we had focused on our efforts in Harrisburg, getting a specific piece of legislation passed and sent to the governor, and hopefully, a governor would sign that. For the past four years, we've, you know, not been successful at having a governor who would support that effort. Obviously, for the next four years, it doesn't look like that's going to happen either. So we shifted our focus more to a, a local effort, to work with counties to implement an ordinance prohibiting the use of project labor agreements. Now, these are pretty simple documents. They are pre-hire collective bargaining agreements. Essentially, what a PLA will, will say is that anybody's free to bid on a project that is either maintained by the, the local government, or uses money from that local owner. And that could be a tax, a tax credit, a loan, a grant. Anybody who takes public money, or works for a public owner, can bid on the project. However, a project labor agreement says, if you bid on this project, you also agree to use not only your, not your employees, but employees from a prescribed labor hall. So these guys would never participate in that project, because, you know, they would never turn their name over to some other one, somebody else's employees. But if a contractor were to do so, essentially, they would bid on the project, get the award, and then they would reach out to the local, local labor hall for that specific trade, and get employees from, from that labor hall. So guys they've never met, and women they've never met, would sign their name off on the effort and the work of those employees. All we're saying is that, that everybody should have an opportunity to bid and compete and be awarded for public projects, and use their own labor for those projects. So, you know, we have two counties right now, Berks County and Lancaster County, that have ordinances in place to prohibit the use of project labor agreements. It doesn't do anything to prohibit a union company, or a signatory company for bidding, or getting an award for a project, nor does it prohibit or discourage anything for a merit shop contractor. It just says that if you're a merit shop contractor, and you get the award, you can use your employees. If you're a union contractor, you can use your employees. It doesn't, doesn't specify where you have to draw your labor, doesn't interfere with the competition of bidders, and, and, you know, it doesn't, really doesn't get in the way of, of that open competition on these public projects. So, like I said, we had Berks County and Lebanon County, both have ordinances on the books. Oh, sorry, Lancaster, in Lebanon County. So we are here to ask Lebanon County to be the third county. We're also reaching out to a number of other counties, but, you know, this is a very important effort for us. So with that, unless you guys have anything else, kind of open it up to questions or discussion.
I would like to add to that, if, if there was a PLA in, for a Lebanon County project, just like Brent was saying, you know, we wouldn't bid on it, because we wouldn't be able to use our own labor. So in, in essence, you're bringing in contractors from outside the county, into the county to do the work. And that's, sort of gets us wound up when we drive around, we see people from out of town doing work locally. But, yeah, so then the money doesn't stay over. It gets, you know, it gets distributed, you know, broadly, so.
Do you have a sample of their ordinance from, you know, Lancaster or Berks?
Yeah, I think we have a Lancaster, Lancaster.
Yeah. Just a second.
Okay.
Actually, piggybacking over you just said, like, this board's been very supportive of using local labor in projects related, so we feel very strongly about that. So I think we would, you know, tend to be supportive, so.
Now, I don't understand what you're saying. You said a lot of words, but it doesn't make sense to me.
Sure.
If we can, we use local labor. That's what we do. That's, that's because we know that they pay taxes here, they live here, we can knock on their door if something's not right.
Sure.
But there are certain laws that say when you have to use a union contractor. And, so I don't understand what this ordinance is changing, and I don't understand what you're trying to accomplish.
So, I don't, I don't know that there's any, if not in Pennsylvania, I'm not familiar with any law that says you have to use a union contractor on any project. I'll give you two good examples. One is, uh, two, three years ago, in Berks County, the city of Redding had to do a wastewater treatment plan upgrade. It was a hundred million dollar project. Now, this is a very sizable project. And the city, the mayor at the time, Vaughn Spencer, insisted on, and in, in the city of Redding, they had, the mayor has control over the contracts. So whether the council agrees, they ratify the contract, but the mayor puts the contract out to bid. So Mayor Spencer put the contract out, and he had a PLA on it, and said, if you want to bid on this project, and you want the electrical part of the project for the wastewater treatment plan upgrade, give us your bid, and keep in mind that you cannot use your own employees, you must hire from IDW Local 98. Now, IDW Local 743 is in Berks County, but they did not have enough union electricians on the bench to satisfy the size of that project. So they turned it over to Local 98 out of Philadelphia. So our argument was, you're in Berks County, and you're going to be using, to your point, employees from Local 98 out of Philadelphia, which is like an hour away, at least.
But I don't understand who enforces this PLA thing. It doesn't make sense to me.
It's the, it's the project owner. So, again, back to my example. So even if you say, "Look, we would never ask anybody to, to use union-only labor on a county project, we want to keep it local," and whether it's union or non-union, it doesn't matter, "we want it to be local labor." The other instance that we've seen is where, like, an out-of-state developer will come in and either utilize a tax credit, a loan, or a grant, and say, "Thank you for the money, we're going to do a project, and I'm going to insist on union-only labor." They would either be prohibited from doing that, or they would have to forego the county's contributions towards that project.
But wouldn't we know that when we open the bids? I mean, we wouldn't have to go with that.
Let me try to...
It's not making sense.
So this doesn't change prevailing wage?
Correct.
This isn't, this isn't going, this isn't a matter of, because you said it doesn't hurt competition.
Right.
It doesn't throw the balance of, of the playing field off, because some can bid at a lower, it doesn't change prevailing wage. Prevailing wage stays in effect. So any project over $25,000 must still be prevailing wages. The county can't change that.
Right.
The county has no ability to change it.
And that's the law that's fucking you.
Right. But, so that doesn't, that's not what this is referring to.
So what does...
So in this case, if, if we bid a project, and it's awarded to a, a contractor, at that point in time, it's up to the contractor where they draw their labor from.
Correct.
So as he used in the example, they can draw it from, maybe, from, maybe a union that has Lebanon County employees, or has Lebanon County members, or they could draw from a further-away union that doesn't, likely doesn't have. And there's nothing keeping them from doing that, there's nothing authorizing, it's, it's totally up to, once you have the worded bid, you can get your labor from anywhere.
Right.
This ordinance would prohibit, as I understand it, this ordinance that passed would prohibit the awarded bidder from taking anything other than the nearest labor pool. Is that fair?
No.
Or...
No. It, the way that it's specified is that...
I worded that a little awkwardly, I guess. They couldn't, they, they can't go to another region for labor, or, go ahead.
If you are a non-unionized contractor, a non-signatory contractor, you can't use your own employees under a project.
Oh, they have to go to a union?
Correct. Yeah. So you guys would, if, if you were to participate, which they never would, you couldn't use Funk employees, they would have to use carpenters from the local carpenter union, or whatever the specified carpenter union is. And I, I don't, it might be, it, you're right, it does not touch prevailing wage. So a non-union contractor and a union contractor both pay whatever the, whatever the prevailing rate is for carpenters, $30 an hour, $20 an hour, whatever it is. That does, that has nothing to do with union status. Everybody will continue to pay prevailing wage on public projects, or projects involving public money. This has to do with a, a pre-hire agreement that says, if you participate in this project, the employees that are working on the job must come from X, Y, and Z labor hall. You can't, you can't bring anybody else in. And that's it.
So it precludes them from bidding, and why would they...
So red flag.
Yeah, yeah. So go, maybe just help me out a little bit. Go through the process, like, these PLAs, let's say that I'm a, let's say I'm an owner, and I'm trying to get public money for an apartment building. I could come in here and say, "Look, I'm not going to build this building unless I have a PLA," right? And then have you guys sign off on a PLA. A PLA is this, is this project labor agreement. At that point, I, at that point, whoever builds the project would have to pull from a union hall.
Have to pull from...
From, from a union hall. It would have to pull from a prescribed union hall that's attached to that project. Okay? That's what a PLA does. PLA forces the builder to use a certain union hall. What, what we're asking you to do is to sign, is to put an ordinance that says it doesn't allow...
PLAs, right. Which is, which is somewhat of a, of, we've not had PLAs.
Right.
So, so it's not really prohibiting or changing anything, but it's ensuring it.
It's insuring, yes. That's exactly right. It's, it's ensuring, yeah.
Okay. So it's, it wouldn't change practice here?
No.
But we have the right to refuse bids, if, for whatever reason. We don't have to take...
They wouldn't have to tell you where they're going to get the labor.
We don't have to take the lowest bid.
Right.
And we are familiar with the people that we contract with, and we research them quite well. So why would that change? I, I don't get it.
Your, your comment that we can refuse a bid for any reason, actually, I think we can only refuse a bid for cause, or I'll say, it's lowest responsible bidder. So if you find the lowest bidder is for some reason irresponsible, maybe based on past practice or some other, some other...
Or something like this.
Well, I don't know if this constitutes irresponsibility on the part of a bidder.
No.
So you, so if you, you can't reject a low bidder simply because you don't like something that they do, unless, unless it comes into, you know, some past practice that they did. In other words, you can demonstrate that, you know, they went, yeah, they, they let a, they let a project sit unfinished, the, the owner had to call in a bond to get it finished, kind of thing. That would be, that would be a reason, you might, you might be on the right track here?
Yes, yeah.
That would be a reason maybe to say, "We're not picking you."
Right, yes.
"We're not awarding you." But, but I'm not sure that a prior labor agreement, you could just reject based on that.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm processing this at the same time.
Yeah. So, so the, it doesn't affect Lebanon County that often, but it just ensures that there's not, that there's not something that comes up in the future. A PLA is, is an agreement that's attached to a construction project. So if the project was bid, everybody would know ahead of time where their labor would have to come from.
Well, for instance, Scott Sekler, I'm going to pick on him.
Sure.
Is building big plants out there. He hires his own stuff. We have no say over that.
Right.
Would this just impact county, county commissioner project?
Publicly funded.
Or would this...
It would, it would...
Publicly funded.
Publicly funded. Money that is in some way touched...
Not, it doesn't touch the private sector then.
It doesn't touch the private sector.
But it would if we gave them an alerta.
Correct, yeah, correct, yes.
Any county money, yeah.
Or if there was a, a guarantee, say the hospital, Wellspan just came in for a bond.
Yes.
Yes.
Would it affect that?
It would affect that. Is that for the Dixon?
That's huge, because we do that all the time.
So, so we were selected by Wellspan just a month ago to, to do the Dixon Foundation work. Okay, that money is somehow touched here. You guys have to agree.
They got a redevelopment assistance.
We did, yeah.
Yeah. So, so if Wellspan came in here and said, "Okay, look, we're going to, we're going to renovate part of the Kaplan Pavilion for, for the, you know, for a family practice, and we're asking for some art cap money for it. And by the way, we want to use the Harrisburg Union," you know, then you would end up, you, they, they could attach a union to that project. And that's a pre, what's the PLA?
Oh, project labor.
Project labor. So that's the project labor agreement. And we're asking that, that we put in, that you put in an ordinance...
We prohibit that.
That prohibits that.
So are you prohibiting unions, period?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Because, because everybody that works on the, everybody that, that we have worked on the Dixon project has to pay labor rates. So really, the labor rate levels the, the field.
It's going, because there you would be over $25,000. So you'd have the laws kicking in that they have to pay a certain amount.
So then if we had McClure Company come in here to do the mechanical work, their union, they would be paying the same rates as A.H. Moore would, or G.F. Bowman would. You know, everybody pays the same rates on the project. So that, the labor rate sort of leveled the playing field for public work. And, and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, the ordinance works both ways. To your point, it expressly does not prohibit the involvement of, of labor unions. It protects both sides. So if a, a signatory construction company, or anything like that, came in and said, "I want to, I want to participate in Wellspan," but, and Wellspan said, "Well, we want you to use non-union workers, because they don't pay into a union pension, and they don't pay into the Industry Advancement Fund. Their, their hourly plus fringe is lower than a union guy takes home. We want to use non-union because of that, because we want to save a couple bucks." They can't do that either. It works both ways. Both, a union and non-union have the ability to bid equally on the project, and they can use their own labor force. That's what it comes down to.
May I go back to your example with Allentown, just to kind of maybe play that out a little further. So, so as you explained, Allentown had a project...
Oh, Redding. You talked about the wastewater treatment plan?
Oh, yeah, Redding. Did you say Redding? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So they had a project, the, the local union didn't have the capacity.
Yep.
So they went to Philadelphia Union, which had the capacity, and then, so you had those workers working at it. With, with an ordinance that prohibits PLAs, what, what happens in that instance then, when there, when there literally isn't enough capacity in the workforce? Then what, what does the contractor do in that case, if, if this ordinance is in place?
You mean on the, like, oh, on the merit shop side?
Yeah, where, then where do they go?
If I'm a general contractor and I bid, or any subcontractor, and you guys can speak this better than we can, typically, what I've seen is, is, you know, amongst the merit shop universe, contractors will borrow from each other.
We do that.
Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't, what I'm getting at is, it could potentially slow a project down because there's a lack of labor?
Yeah.
Or doesn't that happen?
Um, that can happen, but that would happen either, that would happen in either case. If the labor, if, if the labor market is that tight, then it would happen regardless of whether it's union or non-union.
And I'm not sure, you know, I can't imagine a project of that significance, really, here that, where you'd run out of labor, but...
Right, yeah. But it, it affects any project that you guys touch, in any way. You don't have to necessarily be funding it, you could be, you know, sponsoring.
Well, the, using again, the Wellness Center.
Yeah.
That, that is a redevelopment assistance capital project of a million dollars, and it, and it, and the county is the grantee.
Yes.
Which passes it through to the hospital, which is where, where our fingerprints go on it.
Right, yeah. So if you had, if there was, if you passed, if, if you would pass this ordinance on any project, then you'd touch like that, would prevent any sort of...
So carrying that up, this, it would, it would force you...
Yeah.
To, to use local...
Yes.
Local labor.
I'm going to say that it doesn't force us to use labor, the local labor, but it encourages us to, you know.
So it really, it doesn't, you know, in the circumstance that we're in now, it really doesn't change anything. It's, it, it locks it in though.
Yeah.
And ensures, it's the best word I can use.
Right, yeah.
That it won't go.
And then how long, they could, they could redact, or retract the ordinance, or rescind the ordinance at any time if you didn't, for some reason. But it just, I just hate to see local projects, you know, being, being staffed by people from out of town.
But we, we fight not to have that happen.
Right, yeah.
We do that automatically.
But not, you could actually, if, if you didn't pass this ordinance, there, there could, there's a possibility that, that an owner could come in and say, "Look, we want to use, we want to use the labor hall," and that would preclude anybody from Lebanon from picking.
Well, we do that in projects that we are accepting the bids. But at the instance of the hospital.
Right.
We, you know, adopt an ordinance to allow them to get the funding. We have no control whatsoever over who they char, who they contract with, so this would extend that to them.
Well, do you think they're going to like us doing that?
It's not, it's not preventing them from hiring anybody?
No.
Right. Just prevents them from hiring union-only contractors, or contractors that supply union-only labor. That's all. Right. And that is exclusionary, where, where, you know, we can't supply, our, our employees are non-union, or don't belong to a union. We will not allow, they will not be allowed to be on the project, if, if it's a PLA on that project.
Any other questions for us?
I understand that is a little confusing. And it's sort of a subtle, you know, it's a subtle sort of guarantee that, that, that the competition feels, feels well.
I think where it, it may come in is, and you might be helping with this, but the, the pre Keystone Purchasing Network, is it called, KPN? And it's, where the state has already pre-bid a vendor, that if you want to just turn to them and say, "Hey, we need to get this done," and not go through the bidding, because we're in a hurry, or, or whatever, you can do that. And we've done that. We have...
Re-go all the processes.
Right, we have done that. In that case, we might be, yet, hiring a contractor...
Sure.
That's, that's going to use someone, because they're doing it in such a, they're doing the work in such a large region.
Yeah, right.
I mean, Lowbar is an example of that.
Sure.
You know, they, they're drawing from, you know, Dillsburg to, I don't know how far, Scooboo County, I don't know, part of that region. But, so, so with an ordinance in place, if we were to go the KPN route, they would be then required to use more local labor? Is that, is that fair?
They just, they could hire whomever they wanted as subcontractors, if that's, you know, the only preclusion is that they could not mandate who those subcontractors use as employees.
Okay.
So this came up in Cumberland County, because Cumberland County has a number of county-owned bridges. And they said, "Whoa, you know, we have these bridges, and we want to redo the bridge, redo the construction on the bridges." And one of the ways that they do that is they hire a construction management firm. And they said, "Here's the package of bridges that we want done. Here's X amount, we have to do it, go do it." And the CM, the construction manager, hires the subcontractors, the cement masons, and the carpenters, and all that to do this.
And we do that with Funk. We hire them as contractors.
Right. And it's the same instance.
That's why, that's what's not clicking with me.
So if you, if you signed that contract with a construction manager, essentially, that's where your authority would end, right? You would pay them to manage it, and get those, the X number of bridges reconstructed in X number of ti, in X timeframe, and you would give them a certain amount of money to do that. Now, they could in turn go out and say, "We have cement masons, anybody can bid on these projects, but if you do, you have to get from the local cement masons. You can't use your own employees." And in that case, you would say, "Whoa, that's not what we wanted. We don't want you to hire cement masons from the local union hall in Williamsport. We want you to hire cement masons from Lebanon County." And they say, "Oh, no, you don't have authority over that part of the project. You hired us, we're going to get it done in the timeframe and under budget, and that's fine." But they can't guarantee local labor, and this is the only way, well, one of the ways that you can do it, is to, to say, "Look, you have to allow people to use their own employees." You get a local company like Funk in Lebanon County, and lost enough, they're going to use their own employees.
I just, I just think Lebanon County is too small, and this doesn't really apply to us.
You'd be surprised.
I mean, with, with the prison, like I say, we, we hire local contractors to be our project managers. It's, it seems like an awful lot of paperwork, and rules, and regulations to put in place when we're already doing it, because it's the right thing to do.
I think, one, most folks would be surprised to find out how competitive the construction market is now, because we have such a labor shortage. I mean, it's literally, as competitive as it's ever been. So any, any margin is a margin worth fighting for, for anybody. So if you can get any edge in the construction industry at this point, you're going to take it. And this is an edge to, to, you know, merit shop makes up approximately 86% of the construction industry. If you can exclude those guys, because, you know, Funk's going to bid on the project because of this, you just wiped out a huge chunk of your competition. To the second point, this happened last year in Franklin County, the exact same thing. Franklin County said, "Boy, we're so small, who cares about, I mean, when is this ever going to happen?" And I went to a lunch with ABC members, and someone said, "Boy, we've got this weird contract on a library redevelopment in Chambersburg." And it's like, all these requirements, you have to hire from places? I said, "It's a project labor agreement." And they said, "We've never seen this before." And I said, you know, and it's, again, to that point about competitiveness, that it's not just in Philadelphia, and Harrisburg, and Pittsburgh, and Erie, in Redding. I mean, it's, it's everywhere, because people are so competitive. It's any job.
And, and John, to answer your question, or to address your question on, on all the paperwork and stuff that you go through, if you had this ordinance in place, it actually would have the opportunity to maybe eliminate some paperwork, because if somebody comes in, an owner comes in to, and wants to build like, like maybe the Dixon Foundation, I'll go back to that example, and they have a labor, and they have a labor agreement in place, this would prevent that labor agreement from being implemented on the job. If that labor agreement's in place and you don't have this ordinance, then, then you have to do all the extra paperwork of making sure that we bring in, you know, labor union, you know, employees from, from different areas. You know, it would, it actually has the potential to reduce your paperwork, if somebody came in with a, with a labor agreement. Am I right on that? I mean, it's, it's really...
Yeah, it makes it very, very simple. You just, anybody can bid on the project, anybody can win the contract, you just can't, anybody who either, neither you, the commissioners, nor anybody who's involved with county funding, can mandate where the employees come from to work on a project.
Right.
Look, we also, I guess we can review this internally here, and then...
Great.
Were there any counties that you approached that have declined your overtures?
No.
Where are you guys from?
Personally?
I live in Cumberland.
And...
Our office for ABC is in Mannheim.
And who started this? Who's, who's the owner? What's the...
It's an association.
It's a trade.
It's a trade group.
It's like CCAP, but it's for builders.
Yeah.
What is it?
It's like CCAP, but for builders. Builders, contractors, architects.
Because I just got this today. I tried to print out the thing last night, and I got garbed. It was like, stuff all over it, and I, it was so small, and I couldn't read it. And I'm like, I didn't know what it was from. And so how long have you been around?
Since 1969.
Yeah.
Since 1969?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
And your Keystone Chapter is?
Uh, our members themselves, our members are the companies themselves, so we have about 507, 580 members, I think, just in, just in Keystone.
Right.
And that's a Lebanon County region, so it goes from Franklin, oh yeah, Franklin County all the way out to...
So, you have any members you have in Lebanon County? I'm really putting you on the spot.
That's a great question.
As many as we should.
We should, we should have more.
Two dozen, maybe, is more than that. Two dozen maybe, or a hundred and twenty.
Architects, builders.
Probably four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Janet Thorpe.
Janet, yeah. Those are the best.
We need to, we need to get more.
Well, if you have any other questions, you know, we're available, you know, members are, you know, these guys are here, so.
Try to sound, and if there's anything else we need to do to show up, that would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Can I say there's nothing better than some success in what you're trying to do to encourage new members?
Yeah, that's right.
It's a good tool.
Yes, absolutely. It's a great organization. My dad belonged to it for, I think, there's still a letter from my dad that sits in your hallways from there, when it was first built in that spot, yeah. Anyway, those two guys, yeah. Most, if not all of our employees have been through the merit shop.
It's a good training program.
They have a great training program, you know, really, do a lot of good things. Okay, thanks for your time.
Yeah, yep. Most of the agents person, yes.
Thanks, thank you.